I'd like to call the council meeting to order. Mary Jo, can you please call the roll?
Andy Selhert.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Delir.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Broderick.
Here.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Here.
Matt Ryan Chek.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance? Follow the pledge allegiance, I'll turn it over to Kathy Pucci.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most of us have much to be grateful for while many are suffering either with their health, losing a loved one, or financially. With Thanksgiving approaching, I selected a Thanksgiving prayer written by Samuel Pugh, who was a minister for over 70 years. He actually passed away at the age of 103. And the title is "A Thanksgiving Prayer." Oh God, when I have food, help me to remember the hungry. When I have work, help me to remember the jobless. When I have a home, help me to remember those who have no home at all. When I am without pain, help me to remember those who suffer. In remembering, help me to destroy my complacency, bestir my compassion, and be concerned enough to help by word and deed those who cry out for what we take for granted. Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. At this time, we will vote on approval of minutes for the meeting date November 9th, 2020. Any comments or questions?
Motion approved.
To approve the minutes, Andy Selhert.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Delir.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Broderick.
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Yes.
Matt Ryan Chek.
Yes.
At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience is any say for the good and well for the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Be sure to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Good evening, everyone. Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. I'd like to mention about talking about COVID. I believe it's there, and it's definitely for real. I think some of this stuff is getting blown away and blown out of shape. I have friends that are in the medical field, daughters and things, and about two weeks ago, talking about bus work, has someone in Metro. Metro had zero people in the COVID ward. But his daughter works at a hospital in the city of Cleveland. They had, I think it was 16, two of them were on, it was oxygen. The rest of them were there taking pills. They were absolutely fine. Now they went to the hospital thing evidently, now they're getting paid for COVID deaths. A gallon copy repair guy came in, we're talking, I think he said it was his father-in-law passed away. Got the death certificate, died of heart failure, marked COVID. Another friend was talking to a friend, and the father had passed away in the hospital. He had insurance for cancer insurance. He died of cancer, had no COVID whatsoever. They turned the death into the insurance company, and said, sorry, he died of COVID. And no, he didn't. Now they have to get an attorney to battle this because the hospitals are getting paid for this stuff. Again, I believe it's real, no friends that have been in it. I have a personal friend for over 30 years, her son. He caught it. He has asthma. He's been out, he's been able to work, but just from home for about three months now. It affected his heart, he's on heart medicine because his heart rate went up. So, yeah, it's real, but I'd really like to know the real statistics besides everything's turning red, purple, and orange. There's too many people you talk to, and it's real, but a lot of people you talk to, they're all saying the same thing. Where is this at? Talking to a guy today, and also, he said, I forget what city, but somewhere in the greater area around here, half their service garage is out, and the mayor's driving the truck picking up leaves. So, yes, it's real, people are getting ill from it, don't believe a majority are dying from it. And I hope they do get the cure out soon so we can get on normal. Because this new abnormal is no fun. Have a nice Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Riehl. Anyone else? At this time, we'll have reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll begin this evening with the Finance Committee. We did meet at 6:15 this evening, as we do prior to all council meetings, to discuss the following. We do have one notification this evening. It's a $2,500 Walmart grant for the Shop with a Cop program that we have used, that the city has been granted several times. We thank you, Walmart, for that once again. Under legislation, we have ordinance 2020-46, amending the annual appropriations ordinance for 2020. We talked about this at the last meeting, but this is an $85,000 adjustment. Ordinance 2020-47 is the annual appropriations ordinance for 2021. The budget appropriations are $16,747,600 in the general fund, with an impact on other funds of $11,982,102. Ordinance 2020-48 is also on second reading, amending Exhibit A of ordinance 2020-26, and this is the compensation for part-time, full-time, and administrative employees, the non-bargain agreement for the city of Brooklyn. And we went through, excuse me, we walked through all of these at the last council meeting. Ordinance 2020-49 is the capital improvement plan for 2021. This is a total of $4,547,052. The breakdown is $711,052 for police, $190,000 for the fire, $1,251,000 for the rec center, $707,000 for the service department, $38,000 for IT, and our streets program will be $1,650,000. Ordinance 2020-51, these are the percentages of gross profits for the Brooklyn Municipal Income Tax to be deposited into the general fund, the capital improvement fund, and the capital reserve fund. This is 87%, 12%, and 1% respectively. Ordinance 2020-52 is to ratify the city of Brooklyn's planning, capital planning policy. Ordinance 2020-54 is approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a community reinvestment area tax agreement with Middleburg Heights Healthcare and Rehabilitation Real Estate Avenue at Brooklyn at the estimated cost of $22 million. Economic Bill, the director Rowan, discussed this at length at our previous meeting. And then, due this evening is Resolution 2020-11, is on first reading, but hope to pass by suspension of the rules. This is approving the application, the city of Brooklyn, to the Kauai County Sublettle Grant Program, and this is for the exterior home repair grant program, but the grant is for $50,000, and the city would match another $50,000. Resolution 2020-12 is on first reading, we also hope to pass by suspension of the rules. This is approving the application, the city of Brooklyn, to apply for the CDVG funds, and this will go towards the John M. Coin Recreation Center, that's for the rink roof replacement project, and this grant request is for $150,000. And then, ordinance 2020-56 is on first reading, but hope to pass by suspension of the rules. This is accepting the medical insurance renewal for medical mutual for eligible employees for the city of Brooklyn from January 1st to December 31st of 2021. It is a 0% increase from 2020 to 2021, with an annualized cost of $1.7 million. The last item we discussed in finance was ordinance 2020-57. This is to amend ordinance 2008-60, which is limited to different sections of the Ohio Revised Code, and this is in regards to our community reinvestment area agreement. Mr. Butler explained this, this is to clean up some of the current, our current code in legislation and to ensure it's in compliance with the Ohio Revised Code so that we can pass ordinance 2020-54. And that concludes what we had in finance this evening. Again, we do meet at 6:15 prior to all regularly scheduled council meetings. At this time, we'll move on to Recreation Board. Councilment Tansky.
Thank you. Recreation Center will be closed on Thursday, November 26th, Friday, November 27th, for the holiday. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on December 21st, 7:00 p.m. in the rec center meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is legislative update. This is Belvire.
Thank you. Of course, the coronavirus is on everyone's minds, with it spreading worse than ever. All we all have to be extra aware with the holidays arriving. Governor Dewine has made a number of proclamations to help stop its spread, but he is running into opposition from the state legislature. This past Thursday, Ohio lawmakers sent Governor Dewine a bill that would strip his administration of the authority to issue coronavirus orders. The governor has publicly stated the measure would be a disaster, and he vowed to veto it. Senate Bill 311, which passed along party lines, would ban the Ohio Department of Health from issuing mandatory quarantine orders enforced against people who are not diagnosed as sick or directly exposed to the disease. Ironically, it's the governor's own party that has put this bill forth and are backing it. If Dewine follows through on his promise to reject Senate Bill 311, the Ohio Senate could override his veto if three-fifths of senators, that's 20 of 33, vote to make it law. The bill passed the Senate in September with exactly 20 votes. The bill would not void existing statewide orders, including the three-week 10 to 5:00 a.m. curfew announced this week, a renewed statewide mask mandate, and a stay-at-home order like the one Dewine ordered the state health director to issue last spring. But it would prohibit such orders from being issued in the future, and it would allow lawmakers to vote to rescind any existing state health order. Governor Dewine stated during a coronavirus briefing Thursday that he has a moral obligation to veto the bill, as it would hamstring his ability to respond to a number of crises, from pandemics to biological weapon attacks. He said the bill would make Ohio slow to respond to a crisis. It would take away tools from this governor and future governors, and would put the lives of Ohioans in jeopardy. This bill is a disaster. So we just have to wait and see if this bill will be passed, greatly limiting the governor's ability to quickly react to emergencies. And that concludes my report.
Plating Commission, Councilman Sue Broderick.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. We had a special meeting this evening. We approved an application for Penjo Outdoor, for a double-sided electronic billboard on CSX property at Zero T to Mid Road. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be held remote Wednesday, December 2nd, at 6:00 p.m. There currently is one item on the agenda, and it's a six-month review of a stipulation set for Ohio Machinery Company doing business as Ohio Peterbilt for conditional use for tractor sales in a GB General Business District at 9500 Brook Park Road. This was approved by City Council on June 3rd, 2020. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, School Board Liaison, Mrs. Belvire.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Dr. Calaris sincerely thanks families in the community for their continued support of the district's efforts to provide students a safe and constructive learning environment during these challenging times. The successful transition from starting the year in the remote learning model to their current learning model is a testament to the strong partnership shared between the district and Brooklyn families. The marching band delivered an impressive parade performance in the neighborhood north of the high school to celebrate the football team's participation in the 2020 OHSAA Football Playoffs. The varsity girls soccer team recently earned an exciting double overtime victory to advance to the district semifinals. Many congratulations to all of the fall sports athletes on their performances. High school students in the mural class are partnering with our City Brooklyn and Sherwin Williams to paint a mural on the wall located at the intersection of Ridge Road and Brook Park Road. The design phase has been completed, and formal work on the mural is scheduled to begin in spring 2021. Many congratulations to our Brooklyn preschool staff, students, and families on the school recently being named a recipient of the Ohio Positive Behavioral Intervention and Support Bronze Recognition Award for 2020. Representatives from the preschool will be recognized virtually with other statewide recipients in December. The Brooklyn City Schools will continue to provide a remote learning option for interested families during the second semester of the 2020-21 school year. To help the district plan accordingly, parents have received a new commitment survey form to enroll their child in the remote learning option for the second semester. If families are intending on enrolling their students in the district's remote learning option, they are asked to fill out a survey form as soon as possible. It can be accessed on the Brooklyn School website. And that completes my report.
Thank you. The committee, the whole, met following the Finance Committee meeting, as we do always before the regularly scheduled council meeting. We went over two items, the first of which was ordinance 2020-45. This is amending Section 75902, the bag collection recycling, and this is to bring us into compliance with the new Ohio Revised Code law that was passed a couple of weeks ago. Lastly, we had a presentation by Micah Stricker from the county in regards to the city's master plan, and he went over kind of what that plan's going to look like, the different goals from that plan. And I would encourage residents to go to the city's website and then to take a look at that master plan. It'll be available, there's a link you can click on the city's website, and it will be available for comment through December the 6th, which is Sunday, December the 6th, for comment on that. And then, of course, all those comments will be reviewed and potential changes made. And we hope to have a draft document of this master plan to City Council by the end of this year, 2020, so that we can adopt it if we so choose early in 2021. And so, I want to thank the administration. This has been a long, arduous process compounded by all the COVID shutdowns and lockdowns. It's been more difficult, but I think we're making some very positive headway on that. So I would encourage residents to go on the city's website and look for that document where you can review it. Of course, make any comments or recommendations on the link that will be provided. And again, the committee, the whole, does meet prior to our council meetings, and all are welcome to attend. That completes our reports of our committees, commissions, and boards. We'll now move on with reports of council. We'll be in tonight with Mr. Selhert.
Thank you. First Energy Streetlight Audit being done by the city through Real Term Energy is now at the point where all the findings have been turned over to First Energy's GIS Department for their review. There are a variety of issues that are being covered, including the reconciliation of their billing system compared to their inventory listings, locations of lights built at the city, but not exactly in the city, but on the border, missing lights where their inventory says there should be lights, and just a whole variety of things. We started with a difference of about 100, 150. We're dwindling it down. Supposed to actually have a conference call tomorrow, so we're coming to hopefully a conclusion on this, to get an actual number on it. Brooklyn Point this Saturday held a drive-by event for Thanksgiving. There are probably about 15, maybe about 20 cars that participated. By no means was it the size that was, happened earlier in the year, the beginning of the pandemic. It was still nice to see. For some people, for everybody that was there, it probably took maybe about 15 minutes, but it's just nice for the people inside, just to see somebody drive by, wave, smile. It takes, you know, 10, 15 minutes, and during this Thanksgiving season and the rest of the holidays, it's kind of nice to reach out to somebody, if it's a neighbor, or if it's somebody over at Brooklyn Point, and just kind of be nice, and just be kind. I mean, it's the Brooklyn Chambers, they have a promotion out for scholarships. Their sign says, "Be Kind." Maybe it's appropriate for the holidays. Speaking for the holidays, Christmas decorations on homes, it's going to be judged different this year, where residents can submit their pictures. We'll actually give you the details at the next meeting. And my condolences go out to the family of Catherine DeBrosio, longtime resident of Brooklyn, who passed away on Saturday, November 14th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. I too would like to offer my condolences to the family of Mrs. DeBrosio, and also my condolences to the friends and family of Nancy Estep, who was also a longtime resident who passed away. Nancy devoted herself to serving others and was, as one resident described, "an angel on earth." She helped support the Brooklyn Animal Shelter and subsequently the Parma Animal Shelter. She delivered leftover food from local restaurants to the homeless, and she had a regular route that served very many needy people. Even though she had several illnesses, Nancy was a tireless volunteer for most of her life. You may have seen her around town. She kind of looked like a character. She used to wear a floppy hat, and when she went on her delivery, she drove an old, beat-up pickup truck. She will truly be missed. If there are any families who are struggling with internet access during this time of hybrid and remote learning for students, there's a nonprofit called PCs for People, and they provide either low or no-cost refurbished laptops, desktops, and mobile hotspots that provide access to the internet. Their telephone number at the Cleveland office is 216-930-5741, and their web address is PCS and then FORpeople.org slash ClevelandOH. They also take donations of laptops, desktops, no older than seven years old. This is really a wonderful organization that has done so much in this area to help connect families to the internet to assist with their children with remote learning. And finally, I'd like to wish all of our employees and their families and our residents a very happy Thanksgiving. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Belvire.
Thank you. I too would like to express my condolences to the DeBrosio family. Actually, one of the DeBrosios lives next door to me, and they're wonderful people and just very, very family-oriented. I believe she had many children, and she lived a long, good, long life, and I wish them my condolences. I'd also like to put a shout out there for our service garage. You know, with the winds that we had last week, I live on East Lane Drive, the little horseshoe over there by the high school, and the street South Lane by me had a tremendous tree uprooted. It was unbelievable. I had to take a picture of it when I drove by, and it could have really done some tremendous damage if it had have fallen on somebody's home or even in the street. But our service garage was out that night, and they chopped it up and got it all together. They were out the next day, uprooted the roots, and I was just driving by today, and I noticed they even had it all cemented. So it was like nothing ever happened. But what a wonderful shout-out to them, because they did a fabulous, fabulous job. I too would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. This is one of my favorite times of year, and I think in this COVID period, like I've said before, I'm in COVID jail. I notice COVID-driving people, the way they drive, everything is like related to COVID. But I do wake up every morning, and I am so grateful to God for all my blessings. This has been a tremendous year for my family and myself. But through everything, and through the COVID, and through sicknesses and this, I can only say thank you, God, for all my blessings, and I know, you know, that you are with us. So I'd like to wish everybody here a happy Thanksgiving, and remember, stay safe. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Tansky.
Good evening. Thank you. I want to thank Mr. Andy Selhert on keeping up with the street lighting on our residential streets. Residents do indeed appreciate the quick response on getting these burned-out lights back on. As we approach the holiday season, I would like to wish all Brooklyn residents and their families a safe and very happy Thanksgiving as we continue to work through these challenging times. That concludes my report.
Mr. Service Broderick.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Walmart, they're on our agenda, for a donation for $2,500 for Shop with a Cop. This really is a wonderful, wonderful program. I've had the privilege of having students who have gone through this shop with a cop. It is a wonderful experience for them and also our police officers. I'm not exactly sure who enjoys the shopping more, but it's just a great, great day for the students, and I hope, even though there is so much concern about health and safety right now, I hope they're still able to find some way to enjoy that Saturday morning. I'd also like to wish condolences to the friends and families of our longtime Brooklyn residents and also important volunteers. Volunteering in your community is one of the best things about living in a community the size of Brooklyn. It's easy to get involved, and we will miss their involvement. And the last thing is to have a safe and healthy Thanksgiving. I think that has more meaning this year than it often does. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Ryan Shaki.
Thank you. As Kathy mentioned, a resident had emailed council to let us know about Nancy, and while I never had the pleasure of meeting Nancy, it sounds like she was a wonderful person and someone that we should all strive to become a little more like. In addition, Mary mentioned the service garage, and I know we had a tree on our street that took down a line, and the line itself and the tree were both moved before I could even, you know, call and tell someone about it, so thank you to them. In addition, we had opened our recreation center for warming and charging in extended hours, and, well, no residents use it this time. I think it's great that our community comes together for residents. And, you know, there are times, especially with COVID, where not everyone feels comfortable going other, going over to other families' homes. I think that it was great that we were able to get the staff and offer those extended hours. And finally, I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving with the holiday season upon us. I really do hope that you consider safe options in getting together with family outside of your household. One alternative, I know I saw Zoom is lifting its 40-minute time limit from midnight Thursday through 6:00 a.m. on Friday to allow families to virtually meet this year safely for Thanksgiving. So just an option to celebrate, you know, uniquely and safely this year, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Just three days from now, a lot of people have mentioned this, America will once again celebrate what has become my favorite holiday, and that is Thanksgiving. I look forward to once again getting together with my family to share funny memories, to eat way too much food, and of course, most importantly, as Mrs. Belvire mentioned, to thank God for his wonderful blessings. In many ways, 2020 has been a trying year, but we all have much to be grateful for, and it is vital, and it's necessary that we take this day to say thanks. In this week of Thanksgiving, I would like to say how grateful I am to work with each and every member of council, the individual and distinctive balance of ideas and views of each member, working together to, we've seen some great things accomplished in our city this year, and I look forward to next year as well. I'm also very grateful and thankful for the residents of our city who have given their confidence in all of us up here to serve as your representatives. Brooklyn truly is home, and it's the residents and of course, our families that are credited with making it that way. Additionally, I'm grateful for the mayor and her administration, who are always so very quick to respond to resident issues and who are very much helping Brooklyn move forward, even during a time of difficulty this year. Thanksgiving, as has been mentioned, will likely look different for many Brooklyn residents and many Americans this year, as they choose to have smaller gatherings or to limit travel. For others, gatherings will look like they have in years past with all the trappings that go with the holiday. That is the beauty of America. Every citizen gets to decide for themselves what is best for them and for their families. Brooklyn residents and all Americans are good-natured, but fiercely independent, and are more than equipped to make decisions for themselves and for their families. We've never been a people that adhere to group think, and this is a very good thing. We're a nation of different ideas and views. Respecting the views of all others, whether we agree with them or not, is one of the things that has made our republic so great and will keep her great in the future. I do wish all the residents of Brooklyn a very happy Thanksgiving, and urge you to all be safe and have a blessed holiday with family and friends. And one more note before I turn it over to the mayor. Council has agreed to comply with the Board of Health recommendation, so our next meeting will be virtual on December the 14th. It will be held on Zoom. You can go on the city's website and see a link there. It'll be on YouTube as well. So at this time, we'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Also, thank you, Mr. Van Kirk, for doing a wonderful recap of the master plan meeting previous to this. If anyone has questions after they look at the presentation that will be on the city's website or YouTube, don't hesitate to call City Hall and ask those questions, 216-351-2133, or call the County Planning Commission directly. This is an important time when we push these ideas out to the public to give your feedback. So whatever plan arrives at the city council's desk in the beginning of next year, or the planning commission for the city, that it encompasses everybody's idea holistically, we're not going to satisfy everybody 100%, we all know that, but that's a good representation of what our public as a whole likes to see move forward from here. I think that Mrs. Belvire, Matt Ryan Shaki, did a wonderful recap on thanking our employees for last weekend. It was a crazy weekend. I was on the phone very late at night trying to talk to our representative about getting Brooklyn's electricity back up everywhere. Took days. Our service department was out Saturday picking up leaves because they were behind because of employee shortages, and they knew the wind was coming, so they didn't want the leaves everywhere, and then they had to come in Sunday to cut down multiple trees all throughout the city. Our police and our fire department were chasing their tails, as the chiefs would say, all over the city. Our employees did a wonderful job of doing the best that they could with what Mother Nature put in front of us, so thank you for all of your hard work and dedication. Nature put in front of us, so thank you for all of your hard work and dedication. Some good news in a year of a lot of bad news, Santa's still coming this year, so I want to remind everybody that Santa will be here on December 12th and 13th, starting around noon on Saturday, the 12th. Santa's sleigh will travel on Tideman to Bidoff towards Ridge Road and visit all the homes south of Bidoff and the Brooklyn Acres and the streets east of Ridge Road. Starting around noon on Sunday, the 13th, Santa begins his visit at the homes in the Taunton-Hammond area and then heads north on Memphis, starting near City Hall area. Santa will travel the area of St. Thomas More, then the Westbrook Village Apartments and the streets behind the Westbrooks, and then the sleigh will head to Tideman Road and turn onto Bidoff and cover all the homes north of Bidoff Road. You can check out Facebook for live updates of Santa's location all throughout both of these days, and please remember to wear your mask and keep social distance. We will still have pictures with Santa, but please don't try to jump in the sleigh. We are trying to practice good social distancing. And as always, I want to thank Wally Parker from Wally's Auto, as well as the Brooklyn Auxiliaries, especially Gary Sennemeyer, who takes care of ordering the baked candy canes for all the kids. They do a terrific job every year, and if it wasn't for them, we don't know if we could do this every year, so thank you again. We've talked about COVID a couple of times. Thank you, Mr. Ardito. It is very confusing talking about COVID. This year has been a year of back and forth on the data that we've all been presented, even on my level. It's confusing. I do sort of fear what you were talking about, mayor, taking over the service tour, because I do not have a CDL to get on that truck, so I am hoping that is not the case in our city.
I have one, mayor.
Ron, okay. I don't know if that'll be a union violation, but we'll try. But, you know, I know in my house, I've had fights with my husband about holidays and family. My daughter begs all the time to sleep over her cousin's house like she did before COVID started, and today she even asked me to cut up an onion so she could cry for her dad to convince him to sleep over her cousin's house this holiday season. So I know it's a lot for people to take. It's been all over the place, and our feelings have been up and down, but I would ask you to just try to follow the recommendations as best as possible. We lean on medical officials as much as we can, so, you know, where possible, if you're in a store, wear a mask, try to keep distance, wash your hands, just, you know, practice good sanitation habits, if that's the very least that you can do, just for others' sake. I understand where Mr. Van Kirk talks about freedoms in this world, but also, you know, freedom is also protecting our neighbors, too, so, you know, if we're in a store, just try to respect the medical rules, and let's just try to get past this, you know? Hopefully, six months from now, we have a vaccine, and everybody is looking at this as a thing of the past, and let's just try to get through these holidays. I know it's tough. It's happening in my house. I know it's happening in your house, trying to juggle, being a parent, taking care of your parents, whatever that case is, but just let's try to get through this together because the more we argue and fight about this and make this a political issue is the more that we become a divided nation and a divided city, and that's no good for anybody. And on that note, I'm wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving and enjoy that time and be thankful for all the things that we have.
Thank you, mayor. We'll now move on with our legislation for this evening. The first item we have is notification, as was mentioned a couple of times, a $2,500 grant from Walmart for our Shop With A Cop program, so once again, we want to thank Walmart for that. We do have two appointment confirmations for council. The first is, we have a letter from the mayor that says, "Dear members of council, I'm requesting council confirmation on the reappointment of Mike Ross to the City of Brooklyn Recreation Board. He'll be serving a three-year term ending December 31st, 2023."
Move to confirm Mr. Ross to the Recreation Board.
Thank you.
To confirm the appointment, Andy Sellers.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
No.
Sue Grodick. Yes. Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Mag Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Members of council, I'm requesting council confirmation on the reappointment of Rebecca Bindis to the City of Brooklyn Recreation Board. She will serve a three-year term ending December 31st, 2023.
Move to confirm Ms. Bindis to the Rec Board.
Second.
To confirm the appointment, Andy Sellers.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Mag Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
The next seven ordinances are on second reading. Ordinance 2020-45, amending section 759.02, bag collection recycling of the codified ordinances of the City of Brooklyn, Ohio. Are any comments or questions? I make a motion that we adopt.
Second.
To adopt, Andy Sellers.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Mag Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
To adopt, Andy Sellers.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Mag Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Resolution 2020-12, approving the application of the City of Brooklyn to apply for the Community Development Block Grant Funds to the John M. Cohen Recreation Center Ice Rim Roof Replacement Project, and this grant is for $150,000. Any comments or questions? Any dispel, suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules, Andy Sellers.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Mag Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Order is 2020-56, accepting the medical insurance renewal from Medical Mutual of Ohio MMO for medical insurance coverage for eligible employees from January 1 to December 31, 2021. This is at an estimated cost of $1.7 million. Any comments or questions?
Any dispel, suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules, Andy Sellers.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Mag Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Order is 2020-56, accepting the medical insurance renewal from Medical Mutual of Ohio MMO for medical insurance coverage for eligible employees from January 1 to December 31, 2021. This is at an estimated cost of $1.7 million. Any comments or questions?
Any dispel, suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules, Andy Sellers.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Mag Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Order is 2020-56, accepting the medical insurance renewal from Medical Mutual of Ohio MMO for medical insurance coverage for eligible employees from January 1 to December 31, 2021. This is at an estimated cost of $1.7 million. Any comments or questions?
Any dispel, suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules, Andy Sellers.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Mag Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
On first reading this evening is ordinance 2020-57, an ordinance amending ordinance 2008-60, which implemented sections 37, 35.65 through 37, 35.70 of the Ohio Revised Code, established and described the boundaries of the Community Reinvestment Area in the City of Brooklyn, designated a housing officer to administer the program, and created a Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council and a Tax Incentive Review Council in order to clarify a provision on the percentage and duration of abatement for certain projects. That concludes our agenda for this evening. We do anticipate going into executive session here momentarily, but before I make that motion, is anyone else on council, the mayor, or the director that we have here this evening have anything to add? Right. I'll make a motion then that we move into executive session with the mayor, council, and the law director for the purpose of discussing possible litigation as purposes of negotiations.
First, that's it.
Sorry?
All litigation and purposes of negotiations.
Okay. And purposes of negotiations, thank you.
Negotiation is over the wages and other matters affecting employment of individual employees.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Did I make the motion in a second?
Yeah. To adjourn to executive session, Andy Sellers.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.